Hey Jim.
All right, I'll make our housekeeping announcements here at 6:30. This meeting is being recorded and we will then share it on our website, Town Gannon Lake, and post it on the town's YouTube channel that we have now. So if you stay on the meeting past this point and participate, we'll take that as acknowledgement of your willingness to participate in the recording and have your portion of that recording shared. Also, we've now got, it looks like about 19 people. So if you are not speaking, whether you're at home on the phone or on your computer, if you would mute your microphone so we can avoid feedback that way, that would be great. That's all I have.
Thank you Jonathan. I'll follow the order of the Culver Town Council meeting on Tuesday, May 26, 2020. Roll call please.
Mr. William Clevenger?
Here.
Phil Giffens?
Here.
Sally Richardi?
Here.
Rich West?
Here.
And Jamie Monroe's absent.
Okay. Once again, I guess we're going to dispense with the pledge of allegiance, but I'd like to take about 30 seconds and we all pray for Jenny and her family. It's time in their life, very unpleasant, but you know, it's just, it's life. So for 30 seconds, I'll just hold off speaking any longer, starting now. Okay, everyone, thank you for that moment of silence. First on the agenda is approval of minutes, the previous meeting.
Yes, may I please have approval of the May 12, 2020 regular meeting minutes and the May 18, 2020 joint special meeting minutes?
This is Rich, I still move.
Is there a second?
Sally will second.
Motion's been made by Rich and seconded by Sally to approve prior minutes. Roll call please.
Mr. Clevenger?
Aye.
Mr. Giffens?
Aye.
Ms. Richardi?
Aye.
Mr. West?
Aye.
All ayes.
Motion carries. Approval of the April financial reports, Karen?
Yes, you should have gotten those a week or two ago, if you could just vote for those approvals.
Is there a motion to approve the April financials?
This is Sally, I'll make that motion.
Thank you Sally, is there a second?
I'll second, this is Rich.
Motion made by Sally, seconded by Rich to approve the April financials. Roll call please.
Mr. Clevenger?
Aye.
And Mr. Giffens?
Aye.
Ms. Richardi?
Aye.
Mr. West?
Aye.
All ayes.
Motion carries. Next on the agenda is Main Street Jefferson to Madison, closure request for retail and restaurants. Is there open discussion?
I'm Suzy Moller, she's here, if anybody has any questions on that, or if you would like me to speak, that's fine also.
Yes, Suzy, why don't you go ahead and speak and for everyone, let's update everybody.
Okay. I'm Suzy Moller, Cafe Max owner, and I contacted the members of council about a week ago after receiving notification from the State Restaurant Association that Excise was allowing us to extend our patios during this COVID situation to try to accommodate our seating restrictions. In case you're not aware, restaurants are at this point reduced to 50% capacity with six foot between tables. For many restaurants, I'm one, our old buildings have us at 18 feet and 20 feet on our interiors, and to accommodate the six feet, we do not even get close to our 50% capacity. For example, you can, you can have up to 50% with the eight foot restriction, with the six foot restrictions, I currently have 16 tables in the restaurant. I can normally seat during our peak season, which is coming up summertime, we just passed it for Memorial Weekend, you know, big academy weekends, we can seat 160. We have 16 tables. So they're allowing us with city approval to go into the public right of way, even the roadway, if the local government approves, and we still have to meet the restrictions. So we cannot increase our seating above the 50%, which is what the restrictions are now, but with the six foot, it allows us to get closer to that 50%. So with that information, I went to all the local businesses to ask their input before I moved forward. If they would have been opposed, I would not have even made the request. But I went through, talked with the merchants, emailed, called, I think I was actually able to speak to everybody except NADA was the tech who owns La Crecius. And some of the merchants, besides being on board, wanted to kind of make it the most beneficial possible for everybody. They were thinking the pedestrian area would, and it does normally increase traffic, so they were talking about dressing it up, making it appear as a town square during the time it's in place. I know we have Wi-Fi that the town has partnered with, was it MediaCom maybe, to make that happen? We're talking about the barricades would be inset on the street, they wouldn't be out at the intersection, that would allow the golf carts to pull in and park, would I say, parallel like the parking is now. So they would be pulling up to the barricades, so the seven parking spots that we lose on each side would then be regained by seven golf cart parkings at the ends of the street. So they would be inside, they wouldn't be in the intersection. So the barricades wouldn't go all the way to the intersection, they would allow for the golf carts. And then other merchants have come up with ideas of things we need to do to make it a draw, which is a great test period. We understand this is just a test period, see how this goes, and then reassess with the merchants and the town, how they felt, how they felt it went, did it improve their traffic at all? That's kind of where we're at, and I'm happy to answer any questions. I'm hoping that all of you had time to talk with the other merchants also.
Jonathan, this is Rich, could you summarize, I think you talked to a number of merchants, especially on, along Lake Shore Drive?
Yeah, I talked to a lot of folks, some of the business owners on Lake Shore, some of the business owners on Main Street, and some of our, our department heads. And on Lake Shore, I think part of our questions were just, you know, if council wanted to consider this on Main Street, what would the response be on Lake Shore? Is there anything that makes sense? And there wasn't, I think, anything that popped out with any of the Lake Shore businesses, they're just, the traffic on that street, the layout, one of the main restaurants, they're already having a lot of outdoor dining area, there just wasn't an immediate need or plan that made sense to any of us kind of talking through that. On Main Street, I guess the only concern that was brought up to me was just the loss of parking with senior citizens or customers that might have trouble getting around, just wanting to have good access for parking, that a long-term closure especially might be a concern. But I think the general consensus was, they were willing to try it out and see how it went, kind of a thing. And as far as our departments went, I mean, I think the main concern was from our emergency services, just that it was slow response time to anything in that area, or that they, you know, any call on the south end of town or south end of lake, that would often be a, a main route that they would use. So that was a bit of a concern if it would go on, on a real long-term basis. Wayne brought up the idea, which is something he's wanted to do for a while anyway, whenever we do road closures of purchasing some more of a heavy-duty temporary barrier, like a concrete barrier that could be put up. I think I had in my notes, it would only be around $250, somewhere in that range to, to get a few of those and get those set up. Suzy mentioned possibly insetting them to try and allow for some golf cart parking. I didn't run that particular part of it by Wayne, I don't know if he has any concerns with that. Myself, I see the benefit of, you know, being able to still use some parking there, but then once you're mixing kind of pedestrians, outdoor shopping tents, and golf carts, obviously that's more of a safety concern than just straight blocking the street. So I think that, that's all.
If I could address that, it might be a good test with what Elizabeth had. Elizabeth from the florist told me she had concrete planters, and I didn't know exactly what that meant. She told me to go look at them, they're at the old hydro pump building that I guess her boyfriend owns. And I did go out and measure those, those are massive, big, those are planters that nobody's getting past. So those could be put in the street, she had four of them, and she talked about planting them, making them pretty, but they are round planters, I'm trying to find the photo here while I'm talking, they're round planters that you would not move manually. She would have to bring them in with like a forklift, that might be a good test. If I recall, I can't find my photo, but if I recall, oh here it is, they were 34 inches wide and 25 inches tall, and they're definitely a commercial-looking concrete planter. Just, just a thought, I'll actually, I'll text a photo to a couple of you now so you can see what they look like.
Are they circular, Suzy, or are they rectangular?
They were the circular ones, so you would probably put them, well, I mean, we could test them at one end, at the main, wherever, it was just a thought, they're round, they're big, they're, they're, they can't be moved, they're full of soil already, so they can't be moved by hand.
Does that answer your question, Rich?
Yes, thanks Jonathan for contributing that. I would concur with Wayne, I think if we decide to do this, that we should put some concrete barricades there. It might be a nice way to dress them up with those 36-inch planters, but I don't know that that would address concern about somebody driving between those, so.
Does anyone else have any comments they want to bring forward?
Bill, this is Bill Clevenger. I went down Friday afternoon and visited all the merchants that were open. I found only two that were in favor. One was basically uncommitted, two were against, and one was vehemently against.
Okay.
I, I would be interested because I spoke to the question.
Any citizen can get in here at any time? This is Russ.
This is Sue McInturf. I, Bill, you talked to me and I was in favor of it, Jennifer was in favor of it.
I, Sue, in deference, I wanted to leave people's names out of it. I said two were in favor.
Okay, but I'm, you know, Elizabeth was, did you talk to Elizabeth? I'm trying to decipher who.
Yes, I did. I don't think you want to know what her answer was.
Okay, I'm shocked by that because that's not the impression I got from her.
Yes, and that wasn't what she told me, so.
Excuse me, this is Russ, can I have a comment, please?
Sure Russ, go ahead.
This is a bad idea. No one even talked to any of the citizens in town or the visitors that come in here. Just, you know, people are going to have to park on the cross streets in order to get into the places, that's inconvenient. Nobody's going to want to do that. Plus, Main Street is a thorough through town. Can you imagine what people are going to think when they come down, they're going to have to make a detour on Ohio Street to get around that area? It's, it's a bad idea. And besides, it won't be long before the governor opens it up for everybody to have all the seating that they want. We don't, we don't want to put all kinds of tables and chairs out in the street, you know, just for, because the merchants want it. What about the citizens? They have some input to this thing. That's all I got to say.
Well, in response to that, this is Sue McInturf. We're trying to survive businesses to bring in, you know, our restaurants as well as our merchants. We're trying to survive through this COVID virus, and it's not a prob, I mean, it's unlikely to be a, a permanent thing, but there are lots of cities around the country, Indianapolis for one, and some other cities, some other cities in the state and other states, they're doing exactly this so that their merchants can hopefully recover from what's been two months of little or no revenue.
Bill Clevenger again. I think there's another underlying major, major factor, and this is a public safety concern. And I certainly don't want living south of downtown have to have a delay if I need an ambulance by people going around the block. And same way with fire, the other side of the coin is, is that anything south of town, for fire, volunteers have to get to the station, ambulances have to get to the hospital. And I think, and I sympathize with businesses, but I think, you know, the basic underlying factor in this thing, it's a bad idea because of public safety. And I'm not willing to put the public safety of the citizens of Culver at, ahead of the forefront of the economic viability of certain businesses on Main Street.
Bill Giffens, I have a question, has anyone talked to Ken Vanderputty of the Fire Department or Deanna of EMS, and if they weighed in on, on their opinions here, since their emergency?
Bill, I talked, go ahead.
I said, since their emergency services, as well as Wayne, I mean, let's, let's hear from emergency services and hear what they have to say. Go ahead, Bill.
Well, I talked to Ken Vanderputty Friday, and he was vehemently against it. I don't know if he's on the call.
No, Ken said they rescheduled their normal department meeting for tonight, so he wouldn't be.
Yeah, he was, he was going to wait for his department, yep.
Is Deanna on the call? Is, what's EMS doing?
I didn't see her on here, I mean, she did send me her notes, and basically, I think it's all what we've already covered, just as far as slowing response time in that area was the only concern she had.
Wayne, are you on the call, or do you have anything from Excise, or have anything to add?
Uh, yeah, I'm on the call. The, basically what Suzy's asked, you're wanting to butt the tent up to the, your original setup right now, is that correct?
I'm sorry, can you repeat that, Wayne? I'm sorry, can you repeat that, Wayne?
You're wanting to put a tent, you're wanting to put a tent up to your fenced-in area right now.
Yes, exactly, it would expand, yes. We have a, we have a 20 by, we have a 20 by 20 tent that we purchased years ago for the Fall Fest, and Excise said that that's fine, they just need to know that the town has approved. So I've already talked with the Excise about it, my Excise agent, besides the fact of the state government, but go ahead.
Well, what, what people don't realize is, when Indianapolis was doing this with their businesses down there, Indianapolis approached the Alcohol and Commission about this, but when you butt your tent up against it, it changes the floor plan.
Yes, that's why I have to submit.
Basically, the town itself has to write a letter to the Alcohol Commission to request for this to be done, for closing of the street in order to be able to take the floor command of your business because of the alcohol involved in any business. To do it any other way, then you would have to provide a tent, and it would be the same as if it's like a, like a festival type thing where the tent's separated, but then it's a daily fee for every day that it's out there. I mean, those are basically the two versions, but Indianapolis is the one that actually approached the Alcohol Commission with doing something with this. I mean, so it's got a, it, the way I understood it, saw it, the, the town has to be the one to write the letter to ask for the changes of this stuff.
Okay, that, 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 that's not what the Excise agent said, the Excise agent, I want to make sure I did it appropriately, I want to make sure I understood it before I contacted all the merchants and before the town, because I always go to the merchants first, but I did go to Excise, and the agent told me all, she said, you need to draw where the tent is, how it connects to the patio.
Correct.
And, and she said that is all she needs with my signature on it, but I need to make sure that it's okay with the town because it's obviously going into the right of way. But the town did not need to write a letter, no other signature was required. This is from our Excise agent, that I did check with last week.
Well, I don't know, that's what they're telling me. I, I.
Does anyone? Does anyone else care to weigh in on this discussion?
Yeah, I do, this is Charlotte Hahn talking. And Jim, my husband, was wondering, had anybody thought about the gas station business, how that would be affected? He's done an awful lot of improving there, and how's that going to affect him?
Did you, this is Suzy Moller, I'm not sure that Charlotte, did you understand it was just the block?
Yes, I did understand that. But people will, will go two blocks to stay out of it, not zigzag so much.
Jonathan, question back to you, this is Rich, and I, I know you, Wayne just chimed in and talked, but you said that you, you talked to Wayne, you had talked to Bob Porter, you had talked to Deanna, and I thought you talked to Ken. Could you, Wayne has already spoken for himself, but as far as Bob and Deanna and, and Ken, what was the feedback you received from them?
Yeah, no, I, I don't think I got an answer from Ken, but I think he talked to Wayne and Bill Clevenger, so I was good with that, and I think they both stated what they thought. Deanna, again, same thing, just mentioned the response time, and basically, I think hers even said, I would assume the Fire Department would have the same issue, and especially more so for them, is what she said, because, you know, they're not on station, they have to come in from another site. So if you've got, you know, a resident who's a volunteer firefighter who lives on that in a town and would have to typically run through that way, then that's slowing them down twice. But as far as Bob, I think his only concern was over the barricades and the cost and how to handle all that. And I, I think he basically said, you know, he could see trying it out, we, we do it for short events, weekends, things like that, but I'm like doing a long-term commitment. I don't think he was crazy about without kind of doing a short trial. And that's kind of where I was too, is if we want to go ahead with it, I could, I could see trying it out on a, on a shorter-term basis, but not making a commitment beyond, you know, maybe one week, maybe two, or two at the most.
I do, I do have a couple for.
Is that Wayne?
Yes.
Go ahead, Wayne.
Am I understanding this correctly, that you're, Suzy, you're wanting to do this until July 4?
It was, as long as the COVID restrictions are in place, so yes. However long that they, if they, yes, that's what the plan was.
So if, if the governor changes things, for example, if the governor changes things, you're wanting to, and they extend this till August, so you want to do it till August?
Uh, I guess I'm sort of unknown. I wanted to do it as long as the restrictions were in place, and I think it's kind of like the entire COVID situation, week to week, we're adjusting and changing, and does it work, does it not work, is it making a difference? I would assume we would probably know in three weeks if it was doing anything, if it was helping.
Well, Suzy, right now, we're under a 50% capacity now through what, June 15, and then on June 15, it goes to 75 and comes off to 100% on the 4th of July. That's how I understand the governors.
Yeah. Suzy, can, sorry, Bill, can I ask a question?
Go ahead.
Suzy, did you have a tent lined up?
I, I bought a tent years ago for the Fall Fest.
Okay, so you had your.
And you guys, yeah, I bought a tent, a 20 by 20, and then I think the town, a couple years later, they also bought a 20 by 20, right?
Yeah, we own.
Yes, right. Same.
So would your intent be to use your tent?
Yeah, oh yes.
Okay, just making sure.
I'm not asking anybody to put out any money on, on it.
Okay.
Yeah.
Sally, is that you, could you speak up?
Yeah, I'll move this thing a little closer. My question is, how do you secure the tent so that it doesn't blow down in a stiff wind?
Yeah, I don't know if you've been to the Fall Fest at all, but we bought the 50-gallon barrels. I'm sure the town, the town probably has the same situation. And you hook the, you hook the tethers of the tent onto the 50-gallon water barrel, that's how we've done it in the past. We follow the academy procedure, in case you guys didn't know, Arm Brewster is an alum, and so I asked a lot of questions when we bought our tent then. We also bought the sides, so you would put the sides, you would close the sides at night, which also keep the air from coming in and doing a lift on it.
That makes sense.
Yeah, we do a lot of research before we ever do anything, plus I thought it was kind of cheating of me to get a tent just like the academy so that their guys could show me how to put it up, which they did, and it's great, so everybody has the same kind, everybody knows how to help each other out if needed.
Um, I wouldn't have an objection to trying it for a couple of weeks, see how it goes. And if it becomes a problem, then, uh, thanks for the idea.
Bill again, I've got one kind of final question. This past weekend, being Memorial Day weekend, how much activity was there in that one block area? I think I've seen pictures where the streets were empty and, or that block was empty and didn't see anything. Now, I don't know what time that picture was taken, but.
Can I respond to that one?
Sure.
This is Suzy. That's exactly one of the reasons that I think the other merchants are excited about another draw. The traffic patterns to the, to the Main Street have changed tremendously over the year, and I'm not sure everybody realizes how much they've changed. In the years I've had the cafe, we've lost multiple traffic patterns, starting with the factory going from an hour lunch to a half an hour lunch. And when we talk about traffic patterns, this isn't just to increase my seating of the cafe, this is to create a draw. Whenever we do something, it's always to help the other businesses, it's not just soul-serving. And when people come in to the cafe to have lunch, especially when they're from another community, like those going to work at the factory, if they would come in for lunch, they look across the street and might say, you know what, I'm going to pick up my sister's birthday present on my lunch break. Well, when the factory went to half an hour lunch, we lost all of those people. When the Cove went to 80 units down to about 15 that rent in the summertime, we lost all those mini conventions. mini conventions. When the academy went to free lunches for every employee, they were the largest employer in the county. I don't know if they still are or not, but we lost all those people who used to come down for lunch, who would see the shops and would zip over and pick up, you know, an item for themselves or a gift. So all those traffic patterns have vanished. So what we're trying to do is come up with ways to create traffic back down to the downtown. So outside dining does help. Um, but also with the idea of the Wi-Fi that you have been kind enough to provide to the downtown, we thought about putting out some seating areas to encourage people to come down and relax and, and hop on the internet. We talked about seating that might keep men, um, comfortable while their wives shop. We've talked to Heather about, uh, what could she do to encourage children, uh, activities for children that parents might pop in, uh, with the safety of a pedestrian area rather than, um, their kids zipping between cars on the main street. Knowing that it's pedestrian areas, people are a little more at ease. Um, but we've lost a lot of traffic. It, it, it's nothing, the downtown or the main street. We're trying not even call it downtown anymore because with the activity, um, at the other end of town, which we are very happy for our sister businesses down at the other end of town, they've benefited from the traffic.
Do you have a chair?
Something.
All right, let's wait till they.
Hello?
Hello?
Okay. Um, we're very happy that they're doing well. They have benefited from the pass-through traffic when, um, guests came downtown. Now that, uh, they have developed so much that that looks like the downtown. And when we say the words downtown to people, they think it's, it's Lake Shore Drive. And if you have noticed that there's a no U-turn sign even at about Plymouth Street, because people pass through the Lake Shore Drive area, get past the fire department, and then when they get about three, four blocks in of just residential, they do a U-turn. There's actually a no U-turn sign at that. They never get down as far as even the funeral home because all they see is residential. So we have really lost the traffic pattern to the main street. We're trying to create ways. So this was, this was, it was initiated by me, but the other merchants have said, let's try it. Let's, let's see if it does anything to, uh, recreate a traffic pattern for us.
Bill, this is Rich. Um, just a, a comment. As you know, and I think most of the council knows, um, our main street organization, developed Culver, has been working on finding consultants that will help us with, um, moving forward with a revised economic development plan. Last week, we had a call with one prospective consultant who offered a number of sort of short-term solutions or suggestions for the businesses to try. Um, one of the things they mentioned were the sidewalk sale type of things. So putting, putting tables out in front of their, their stores or shop with some of their goods on them, um, doing specials on those. Um, this would certainly facilitate doing something like that. And again, it was a, a practice that had been recommended. And we didn't share this with Suzie at the time because we've been working on a couple of other things, but that was one of the ideas that had been mentioned. And this would certainly facilitate doing something like
Okay. Does anyone else have anything they want to bring up before someone makes a motion one way or the other?
A couple of questions. I got a couple of questions.
Go ahead, Wayne.
Uh, like I spoke to Jonathan about the barrier. That's something I've talked about a long time ago, about concrete barriers. It's always been my concern when they have the Fall Fest and different things. I mean, I think there's a safety issue there, but I think anytime we do anything with any kind of activity with on the streets, that's something that needs considered anywhere in town. Uh, I, I guess I look over this past weekend and I, I, I question whether, I mean, I, I do want to see all the businesses succeed, but I don't want to inhibit them either. I think with what's going on, I, I saw plenty of parking. I guess that what the town has to ask themselves is what, was there enough traffic to warrant or not warrant something to be blocked off versus, you know, letting it flow through? Or, I mean, it looked like ample parking to me. I saw no lines to any business anywhere in town as far as people waiting to get in anywhere to do anything. Uh, I mean, I'm all for helping anyone out. Uh, I, I don't think U-turn signs really has a bearing on the traffic flow anywhere in town because people do it all the time. I mean, they do.
Okay, thanks, Wayne. Thanks, Wayne. Anyone else?
Hi, Bill. This is Bob Porter.
Yeah, Bob.
Another thing to think about is all this traffic that's going to be going around, all this will be detoured directly or indirectly on Ohio Street, which already is pretty congested.
Okay, good point. You know, I'm just going to weigh in here. My main concern is, you know, blocking off pass-throughs for emergency services, um, having to go left, go right. Like Bob just said, go down a high street and, um, talking seven days a week for a couple of weeks, I think on a test case here. So, uh, that just, that just concerns me. But that's, that's my two cents. Um, anyone else? Is there a motion one way or the other? Counsel?
This is Rich. Um, I would move that we permit the closing of Main Street between Madison and Jefferson, um, for at least a two-week period of time to permit a, an a dent, a, uh, adjoining FAMAX and merchants to use that area, um, during this unusual pandemic situation. And in doing so, I would recommend, or part of the motion is that the town would purchase, um, the cement barricades that, that Wayne had mentioned. Um, and we get appropriate signage to divert, um, to divert traffic, make people aware of where alternative parking is, the parking lot across from the medical center just south of Madison, um, and also the CVS lot. Sorry, that's more than the motion, but, um, the motion would be that we do permit the, uh, the proposal.
Beginning when, Rich?
I, I would say effective, um, as, as soon as the plans can be implemented, things confirmed with excise. Um, so, you know, if that can happen this week, that I'm, um, so I would say as soon as possible.
Okay. Is there a second to Rich's motion?
Sally, I'll second that.
From what I've heard, there's a motion by Rich, seconded by Sally, that basically we close off, um, Main Street from, um, I guess, uh, Heritage Park down to the next block, which I guess is what, Madison? And, uh, purchase, uh, barricades, uh, concrete barricades, uh, place it either way and, uh, test it out. Uh, so, um, I guess I'm hearing June 15th. Is that the motion, Rich? Do you, you and Sally agree with that? Yes. Okay. Motion's been made and seconded. Uh, roll call please.
Mr. Clevenger?
Nay.
Mr. Githens?
Nay.
Mr. Chardy?
Aye.
Mr. West?
Okay, we have a vote of two-two. Town clerk, what say you?
Well, as someone who lives on Ohio Street and would be affected, I'm conflicted. And this is what I've had to make as a tiebreaker. So, um, but I do want to see the businesses succeed. So if it's for two weeks and that's it, I'm okay with it. So I would vote aye.
Okay. Motion carries for a two-week period of time, uh, beginning as soon as possible and ending on, uh, June 15th. Motion carries three-two. Okay. Next item. Extension request, ordinance 2020-002, town marshal stipend.
You want me to give the background on this, Bill?
Please, sir.
So back in February, uh, we did change the pay for the position of town marshal to include a stipend, and that was $41.21 per hour for all hours worked over 84 hours in a two-week pay period. Um, when we passed that, we did put an expiration date on it of June 7th, uh, unless otherwise extended by a vote of the town council. And I'd like to request that we, uh, the council does go ahead and extend that tonight. And I would ask until, uh, September 13th this time. And, uh, if Wayne's still on, he can add anything he wants to, but he gave me some notes on the hiring process that I could share and just said that, uh, we had 11 individuals take a written test on May 16th. Then, uh, those that pass, they've scheduled a physical test for them, uh, for mid-June, I think the 18th. And then those that are left after both the written and physical tests, uh, Wayne and Chad will do background checks. Then they'll do department interviews and they'll bring a recommendation to town council. So kind of letting you know where we are in that process, that that is still moving forward. They've been working on it and I still got a little ways to go, but we're getting there. And then as far as our most recent hire, Alex, uh, he was hired at the beginning of the year, but, um, with many of the restrictions we put on the police department and just kind of lack of activity, events and other things going on, it's, you know, been a little more challenging than it normally would be to train him. So he, through no fault of his own, just kind of lack of activities, probably a little behind where, uh, a lot of times we would be with someone who we hired in January. Uh, I mean, he's doing fine, uh, but right now we're planning on having him attend the October session of the police academy. And, and just like everything, that's also been affected by, uh, coronavirus. They sent a group home, uh, at one point, and they've, they're trying to catch things up by doing some online training as part of it, from what Wayne's told me. But, you know, just like everything, they're a little behind where they would have liked to have been right now. Um, we also, uh, we're down, uh, one of our most dependable part-time officers left, uh, due to medical leave for a while this year. But on the upside, we have hired two new part-time officers in the last few months. And I think Wayne's been trying to get at least another one onboard as soon as possible. So, uh, the action I, I'd ask for tonight would be a motion to approve extending the town marshal stipend through September 13th.
Jonathan, why do, why don't we go to the end of the year on this? Because we're not going to have anybody out of the academy. And we're just going to have to renew this again in September.
That would be fine with me if council wants to do that.
Bill, if that was your motion, I'll second it.
Yeah, I, I, I move that, uh, we carry on with a stipend through, uh, December 31st.
Okay, a motion's been made by, uh, Bill Clevinger and seconded by Rich, that we approve the, uh, extension of the, uh, extension of ordinance 2020-002, the town marshal stipend to December 31st, 2020. Roll call please.
Mr. Clevenger?
Aye.
Mr. Githens?
Aye.
Mr. Chardy?
Aye.
Mr. West?
Aye.
All in favor.
Motion carries. Regional stellar plan update.
Um, no Jenny here? Yeah, no Jenny. I'll give this one. Uh, there was a Marshall County Crossroads team meeting this past Thursday, again, trying to finalize, uh, the setup for that group as it becomes a 501(c)(3). Uh, there were some updates on projects. I believe the countywide digital sign is the first one, uh, that was awarded some OKRA funding. Um, I was unable to make that one, and I don't think Marty or Jenny are here tonight, so I don't have much of an update. I'll have to follow up, uh, once the minutes from that meeting come out. Uh, other than that, the, at the joint meeting between, uh, the council and redevelopment, the CRC committed to making, uh, the, the match commitment for the next phase of the trail, uh, and that's in the downtown area. It's $80,000 over the next four to five years, um, towards that 8020 NDOT grant. And thank you to everyone for stopping by at some point and signing that. So I was able to turn that in today, submit it to, uh, MACOG, who then passed it on to NDOT if everything looks okay. So those are my two regional stellar updates. Um, for stellar update, um, I think the only thing was really just the IT work and that that's been scheduled for this week, uh, with South Shore IT. We had a couple of different things related going on at the park that have all been kind of put on hold until, uh, the building had its IT network up in place and running. So, uh, then we can move forward with the camera project, um, and finalize a couple of things with construction, um, that we're waiting on that too. And then our, our ribbon cutting is still scheduled for June 20th at nine o'clock on the Beach Lodge building.
Then is that also, that your town manager reporting that too?
I will head on to that if there's no questions on the first two items. Um, for town manager report, uh, see, when I wrote this, the end of last week, the concrete work for paving was done. They're starting on the actual paving. Looks like they're pretty busy with that, uh, the end of last week and early this week. Things are moving right along, looking pretty good. Uh, once the paving is complete, we do have the, a wayfinding sign project, which is scheduled to start June 8th, uh, with Osterbahn and Sons painting. Um, so we will have some lane restrictions, uh, while that's taking place that week of June 8th. And one other kind of follow-up item, uh, we passed at the beginning of, of all the emergency orders and everything in resolution 2020-002 and 2020-004, that we would not schedule utility shut-offs or assess late penalties until at least June 14th. And at the time, I think when we passed that, the state hadn't even thrown that out yet, or at least when we wrote it. Uh, and now the state has came out with one date and I believe extended it now until July 1st, that you can't do utility shut-offs. Um, with everything going on, I guess, and since they've already kind of pushed the bar back two weeks from what we had, uh, I, my recommendation is that we look to extend both of those dates until July 15th. So I'm requesting that council, uh, extend utility late fee forgiveness to July 15th and also not start the utility shut-off procedures for any properties until after July 15th.
Is there a motion to that effect?
This is Sally. I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Sally. Is there a second?
This is Rich Hall, second.
Motion's been made and seconded to, uh, not do utility shut-offs and waive late fees, um, on water bills till, uh, July 15th. Roll call please.
Mr. Clevenger?
Aye.
Mr. Githens?
Aye.
Mr. Chardy?
Aye.
Mr. West?
Aye.
All in favor.
Motion carries.
Thanks. Um, I had an update in there about CARES Act funding and how we think that is, or how at least I am rereading that, how I expect it to go. Um, we're, our maximum amount that we've been pulled, we could be awarded by the state is 40,000, uh, but they're really specific on what particular items, uh, would be covered by that. We do have some expenses that we've already incurred that I think will be eligible related to PPE that we hadn't budgeted for. Um, it's possible that some of our contributions to things like Fund the Essentials, Food Pantry and Blessings in a Backpack may be eligible. Um, I, that, that was my reading of it anyway. I haven't discussed it with others or, or followed up to ask, uh, anyone at the state as to whether that's the case or not. Um, things like cleaning, sterilizing and personal thermometers are probably reimbursable. That's something we're looking at. I believe Deanna's already purchased, uh, I believe Deanna's already purchased one, a contactless one for the EMS department. We're looking at doing the same for some of our other departments so that we could have a policy in place that would let us screen employees basically daily. And if they have a temperature over a certain amount, you know, you'd keep them isolated for 30 minutes and then retest. And if they're over, and I forget the exact number, it's, I think, 100.4 maybe or something like that, that you would go ahead and send them home. Deanna and Karen had been in contact with some other towns and EMS departments that had already implemented that. And I'll have an update for you on that at our next meeting with the full details, hopefully.
Jonathan, yeah. This is Rich with a question. Does the special cleaning that we had to do in the EMS quarters count or is inevitable?
Yeah, my reading of it was definitely that that was one of the things that would be cut. We have a couple of special events. One is a senior parade. It's only a traffic item and Wayne had kind of given him a tentative okay, but I would like to get council's blessing on it. It's a, for the seniors at Culver Community High School, they'd like to do a drive-through town and around the lake on Friday. They'd start the middle school at 6:00 PM and I circulated a, a map that they provided. And they, just encouraging people to wave from your sidewalk or make some noise, honk your horn, cheer them on. And Wayne would, Wayne, I think, would be the one that would lead the parade, starting at 6:00 PM on Friday.
This is Rich. I would move that we approve the special event request for the high school senior parade on Friday.
Is there a second?
Bill Clevinger, seconds.
Motion been made by Rich and seconded by Bill Clevinger that we approve the senior parade route for this Friday, May 29th at 6:00 PM. Roll call, please.
Mr. Clevinger?
Aye.
Mr. Githens?
Aye.
Ms. Ratchardi?
Aye.
Mr. West?
Aye.
All in favor.
Motion carries.
All right. My last item was, again, I apologize for the late notice on this one. Amber gave me this one. It's only at the park. It is, again, a special event permit. There's a, I believe it's an academy student that is part of their service project, had wanted to do a special food distribution in the park. And they would have basically 100 pre-packed bags or boxes available. They would bring them in a vehicle, park in a parking spot, have a small sign and just encourage residents to drive through, stay in their vehicle, put it in park and the student would then, wearing a mask and gloves, put the, the food boxes or bags directly into their vehicle. You know, be a fully contactless pickup. There wouldn't be interaction or, you know, any touching, any, there'd be proper social distancing between the student and any of the people that would participate. But the request is for tomorrow, Wednesday, May 27th from 4:00 to 6:00 PM. I think Amber's on the call if you have any more questions on it, but I think that pretty much summarizes it.
Hi, I'm Georgia Rice. I'm on the call as well if you have any other questions about it. I'm the one doing the event, so.
Thanks, Georgia.
Is there a restriction on who you're giving these to?
Um, it's just open to everybody. So I talked to Kristen Zainer about the, with the Boys and Girls Club, about people there and she's going to reach out to them. And it's really just anyone who needs it that wants to come by and pick it up.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
I'm, I'm sorry, Bill. Githens, this is Tracy Fox. Can I just, can I just ask Georgia something real quick?
Go ahead.
Okay, thanks, Bill. Georgia, this is Tracy Fox. I think you and I have emailed back and forth about this. So if you could actually give me an email, I have some specific thoughts on how you might be able to get the word out a little bit more. So I didn't realize it was tomorrow. So if you could give me a, yeah, if you could email me, that'd be great.
Okay.
Okay, anyone else? Do we need a motion to this effect?
Yes, please.
Okay.
This is Rich. I, I move that we approve the special event request for the distribution of food tomorrow in the park parking lot between the 4:00 and 6:00 PM. Yes.
Is there a second?
This is Sally, I'll second.
Motion's been made by Rich and seconded by Sally that we approve a special events for food distribution in the park tomorrow from 4:00 to 6:00 PM. Roll call, please.
Mr. Clevinger?
Aye.
Mr. Githens?
Aye.
Ms. Ratchardi?
Aye.
Mr. West?
Aye.
All in favor.
Motion carries. Anything else, Jonathan?
That was all I had for tonight. Thanks.
Sounds good. Department head reports. EMS? Deanna?
I don't believe she's on the call tonight.
Okay. Next. Fire, Ken, we talked about that earlier. He's rescheduled the meeting, so Ken's probably not on. Wayne, please?
Yeah, I think Ken's trying to sign on. He just asked if the meeting was still going on. I think Jonathan pretty summarized what we're doing. Maybe this whole academy, I mean, it's really put us in a big bind, but I don't, I don't really have anything else at the moment, so.
Okay.
If Ken doesn't get on here, I'm sorry, go ahead, Bill.
No, Ken, are you on?
I don't see him. I'll read what he sent me. The, they have a virtual inspection on the truck scheduled for mid-June, so they won't be traveling there, but they will get, I guess, a, a video tour with someone on staff where it's being built. The mural on the side of the building is complete. They're very excited about that and happy with the work. I think a lot of people have probably seen that online, but I was definitely one of them that was really thrilled with how it came out. I thought they did a great job. Oh, and just, he and I had had some discussions about whether or not to proceed with the Fireman's Festival and doing, we had planned on doing some kind of a dedication of the new truck to recognize all the donors and had really wanted to do it during that festival, but no determinations been made on that yet. They're trying to work with the Lions Club to make a decision on that soon. That was all he gave me.
Good. Park, Amber?
Yes, hi. So we have completed pretty much everything for the hiring for the summer. All of our lifeguards were, are certified as of Sunday. And then we had our staff orientation on Monday, so everything's going pretty well there. Otherwise, I was hoping to sort of revisit and get the council's opinions on a few things in regard to the COVID recovery phases. The first thing is, we've had a lot of questions. I know we're opening the beach back up the 30th and we have, obviously, our hours, our starting hours are new to six for that first week or so. But we were getting a lot of questions from the public about after those hours, because we'll only be allowing 50 people per the recovery phase. Once we close, are we then, because in the past, we don't charge because we don't have lifeguards on duty, but then that is unfortunately going to mean that unlimited people can be on the beach. Is that what we'll be doing? I guess either that's our option or closing it down after hours. I don't know if you guys had an opinion on what steps we take there.
I can jump in, Amber. I have, my first question would be, would it be possible, as we're closing at six, to keep one person on staff till 7:30, something like that, 7:30 or eight, and have them just monitor the number again to where it doesn't get past that 50 total? Would that be an option? I guess that's kind of where I am.
Yeah, certainly. We could do that and then would, and then after, I, I can't speak to the dates. I think it's June 8? June 8, then we're open till 7:00. So then, once we jump to that, then will we not have to stage anyone? So anytime after 7:00 PM, just let the public do what they would like.
I, I guess my thoughts from being up there that after 7:00, 7:30, I, I don't think there's usually a large crowd. I, I think if we could keep an eye on it, until then, I think we'd be okay. And I don't have a, personally, I mean, again, just speaking for myself, I don't, if we're allowing 50 people on the beach during the day, I don't have a problem with that after we're charging or after the restrooms are closed, just because of that. I just wouldn't want to see, right, 300 people down there for everyone's safety.
Okay, okay, we'll do that. And then my next question then was in regard to our Beach Lodge classes. We're looking to start scheduling those, those classes right now. We're just looking at two sets of yoga classes. I know in our original COVID recovery phase plan, I believe it was May 24th, Beach Lodge usage did say that classes could be opened back up with following those social distancing guidelines and limited class sizes. Right now, the instructors, the first one, and that's with Sherry, she's looking to begin those classes again, starting June 1st. And then we'll be adding Leanne's June 15th. I just wanted to make sure that was still something that we, just kind of revisiting it and getting your opinions again, if we still want to go ahead and open those up at this time.
I would say as long as they continue with the social distancing, that'd be fine.
Amber, it's Rich, just as a question with those groups resuming, do you have the resources to do the cleaning that's necessary post-groups and between classes?
Yeah, and I talked to the instructors as well. I met with Sherry today and she's the one who's opening within this current phase. So I guess the concerns were kind of more there. But I spoke to her, I talked to her about limited class size of 15 people, six-foot distance in between participants, the instructor having to wear a mask, encouraging the participants to wear them. And then, and just in regard to cleaning, she said they're not using any equipment at the moment, so they're limiting and altering their classes to not having to use equipment. So we won't have to worry about equipment cleanup. But then we do have our facility cleanup and I, we have the resources for staff now with everything and orientation being done. We have the resources to clean up and disinfect after each class.
Okay, so, so you do have the, the resources, the ability to?
Yeah, we have our, we have our full 23 people staff now, so I'm comfortable.
The bathrooms and the, the common surfaces after the classes?
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Amber. Anything else?
That's all from me. Thank you.
Okay. Bob, utilities?
I have nothing to report tonight.
Thank you, sir. Boards and commissions? Flame commission? Hearing nothing. BZA? Hearing nothing. Redevelopment, Rich?
Just that, and Jonathan mentioned it, we're very, very happy and pleased with the fire department mural. We think that came out great. The, the muralists and the artists who did it were very impressed with, with our town and with the warm, welcoming attitude that they received and the encouragement and the interest. We think it's a, it was a project that was funded by the Redevelopment Commission and by a grant from the Marshall County Community Foundation. And we couldn't be more pleased with the, with the outcome on that. We think it'll be a, a great draw and look forward to getting more of them done around town. And besides that, just our next meeting is June 15th. And then we'll probably be using the social distancing or the online team meeting.
Well, Rich, I'll say that, you know, that was just, you know, the mural is, is excellent and is money well spent, particularly since you had the grant, so kudos. Recommission? Hearing no one from, Recommission, clerks report? Karen?
Yes, I have a couple of invoices or claims over $1,500 for your approval. One is a big one, the Rosenbauer Minnesota for the fire truck was $246,685. And that was paid for via donation, the donations received and partly from the fire budget. The second one is part of a contract, but Tim Uhas for $8,673.75 for pure installation. And then I just wanted to call your attention to two more that I added just a little bit ago. The Armbruster Manufacturing, that was $5,022 to replace the tent that was damaged. We received a little over $3,000 from the insurance company for that tent replacement. And then there was one last, and I believe you had approved that already. And then one other one that I believe you approved as well was for the concrete pad in front of the fire station. And that was from Arbuthnot Concrete for $7,778.
Karen, this is Rich, a question on the tent claim. And, and I don't know whether you or Jonathan can answer this. It was my understanding that the, whatever was not met by the insurance claim would be split with the chamber. Is that still?
I will defer to Jonathan.
Yeah, I think that's right, Rich. And I also think, for some reason in my head, it's sticking out that I was thinking there was a portion of it that they were still going to reimburse after we purchased it for some reason. I'll have to double-check that, but I, I believe you're right on that, Rich. And I, I think there was maybe another 500 they were willing to reimburse after we purchased for some reason.
Okay, that's fine. I just wanted to make sure that we hadn't lost track of that. If there are any questions, I would make a motion to approve those claims that Karen detailed.
Is there a second?
Sally, I'll second this.
Motion been made by Rich and seconded by Sally that we approve the claims over $1,500. Roll call, please.
Mr. Clevinger?
Aye.
Mr. Githens?
Aye.
Ms. Ratchardi?
Aye.
Mr. West?
Aye.
All in favor.
Motion carries. Anything else, Karen?
Yeah, actually, I have two more things. One is a sidewalk program that I have a number of people waiting for results on. We received seven applications on May 1st and pretty much, I think we received five within the first five minutes after opening up applications. The total of all those applications is $17,786.98. However, we budgeted last, last summer, $12,000 for that program. And I believe I sent out the spreadsheet that listed out all of the applicants and the reimbursement amounts. And basically, the first two applicants pretty much used up the whole budget for $11,924.40. There's a third applicant that, it's a small one of $474.38. So I would put it out to you, obviously, the first two would get it. If you wanted to go slightly over, we could get a third in if, if that's the way you want to go. We, we may, we budgeted last summer, not knowing how everything was going to go. And obviously, it's a year in advance. We had budgeted $30,000 for the fire truck if needed. And that might be an option if we wanted to wait until after, later in the summer and reevaluate. But we've also spent a considerable amount of money with the COVID virus on a number of things that were not anticipated. So if we just want to cut it off at the, the first two or three, I will leave that up to you. I already made a big decision tonight, so I'm passing that buck.
I would, I would be favorable approving the first three. The, the third one is, is relatively small and in number and, you know, will only put us over the allocated amount by about 300 some dollars, so. That's just my opinion.
It puts us over $398.78 to be exact, Rich.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Is there a second?
This is Sally, I'll second that.
Okay, motion been made and seconded that we approve. Okay, motion been made and seconded that we approve, uh, three people on the sidewalk project for a total of $12,398.78. Roll call, please.
Mr. Clevenger.
Aye.
Mr. Githens.
Aye.
Ms. Ratcherty.
Aye.
Mr. West.
Aye.
Favor.
Motion carries. Anything else, Karen?
The last, well, okay, I have, um, the last thing I, I really have is, uh, Jonathan asked me just to give you an update as far as the appropriations for the, the, um, on salaries for the police department. And right now, we're about, we've spent about 47, 47% of the budget. Um, and basically extending out what was spent this month into next, um, into June. Um, we'd be at 55% at the end of June. So, we might, um, but at the same time, it, it may all kind of wash out because we're not paying benefits for two people uh, that we had budgeted in the benefits line, so we may be able to shift some money around and be okay. Um, but just wanted to provide that update, and the State Board of Account Auditor said they would be, they hope to be done by June 4th.
Very good.
All I have.
Thank you. Attorney report.
Thank you, Bill. Uh, litigation update. I didn't start off with anything I didn't think I was going to have for 614 College Avenue, but at, uh, 5:30 this afternoon, our attorney, Mr. Gardner, filed a, uh, motion to dismiss, uh, based upon the fact that the plaintiff did not provide a tort claim notice to the town, that, that's the College Avenue cleanup property that uh, dealt with a number of years ago. Um, that, uh, motion was expected and encouraged. Um, I did send a copy late to, uh, Jonathan, uh, the building inspector and, uh, to Jenny and to you, Bill, so, uh, I'll, I'll go ahead and copy and send the, uh, copy of the motion to the rest of the council members tomorrow morning, if that's okay.
Yes, sir.
The, uh, 415, uh, Lake Shore, uh, tort claim notice, and that was one where we received a uh, public records request. I furnished most of the documents that I think are responsive to that request to Mr. Gardner, that, that was done at the request of our insurance carrier. I've not heard back from Mr. Gardner, and I, uh, just filed, uh, recently with his office, and they're going to get back to me, uh, soon on that, so, uh, hopefully, we'll get something from him this week. Uh, I'll just note, going back to 614, he had till the end of the week to file that response, so he's done that a few days ahead of time, so it looks like he should be timely in the other. Uh, as for the foreclosure case on our lien, uh, we still are missing a, a couple of defendants as far as service of process is concerned. Uh, interestingly, I received a note back from the attorney that was representing, uh, the group in the other 415 case, uh, the tort claim notice, and she advised that she's not been hired to defend the foreclosure lien case, so she was not accepting service of process for the 27 Group Inc., uh, or Mr. Van Haak. We don't have a good address for the 27 Group Inc. LLC, because that's a defunct entity. Uh, the tort claim notice provided a new address for Mr. Van Haak, and we've sent separate service of process to him at that Michigan address, so, um, we'll, we'll see where we are. We still haven't located the gentleman that has the Big Judgment out of Rochester. Um, he lives in Georgia, uh, we're waiting on a reply for that. So that's sort of the, oh, uh, that's the litigation update. I was going to follow up with Jonathan, and maybe you, uh, uh, Mr. Githens, Bobby, Simon's, uh, Abysso Real Estate Remodeling, that came up on my calendar. Uh, curious as to how that's going. You guys can advise me later on that.
Sure.
The other thing, Jonathan, is you might let me know, are we still on for the meeting on Thursday?
I will double check with him in the morning, Jim. I haven't heard back.
Okay. All right. Uh, and with that, Mr. Vice President, that's all I have.
I will say on the Abyssal, I haven't seen any activity.
Right.
Yeah, I, I, I'm suspecting probably with all of this was a good excuse to delay anything. Uh, I would suggest either, uh, me or one of the two of you, uh, touch base and see how we're, how we're.
Yeah, I've got the owner's email. I'll, I'll check with her this week.
Okay, thank you, Jonathan.
Jim, I had a question.
Go ahead. I've got one too. Go ahead, Jonathan.
Okay, just out of curiosity, as far as, uh, next few meetings are scheduled, I still haven't heard anything. I, I think the cutoff date originally for online-only meetings of public meetings was early June, I want to say the 4th. Have you heard anything about possibly extending that, or?
Uh, um, you're right, it was June 4th. I heard that they were, uh, extending it or going to extend it in some fashion. Uh, but I think we should be prepared to and for our June meetings to have some kind of, uh, uh, meeting where council people, or at least, uh, a majority or some council people will attend a meeting in person, and I, the, you know, the, the former rule before all of this hit was, is if you had a couple of people in, at the meeting, you could have people online, and, you know, as long as everybody was sort of in agreement, conduct business, but, uh, I don't know whether that's something they're going to end up with or not, but I, I think for, uh, planning purposes, we ought to be thinking about probably a bigger room or something to conduct business, so, uh, the council and some public members can social distance.
Okay. Uh, Jim, I've got a question. What's the next step on, uh, the College Avenue address? Or where do we stand?
Well, um, on the, on the College Avenue case, with this motion to dismiss, uh, the course could take, uh, there's two courses it could take. The, uh, plaintiffs could amend their complaint, uh, and that's not going to solve their problem with no tort claim notice. Uh, or the court could conduct a hearing on the, uh, motion, and if determined that the motion was in order, just have the case ordered or be dismissed. The other side could try to argue that there was, uh, what's called substantial compliance, because they sent some kind of notice to the Attorney General's office, and the court could treat it rather as a motion for summary judgment, in which case, uh, our defense counsel is prepared to uh, supplement its motion, uh, and, but again, there would be a hearing. Uh, the motion for summary judgment process, though, would be much longer, so we wouldn't have a determination on it until 60, 90 days, probably. The motion to dismiss, I suppose, remember the judge can, can get something scheduled. Unfortunately, because of all of the back, uh, backup of cases, I don't know that that would, that hearing would get scheduled anytime soon either, so.
Okay, thank you for that.
Days down the road.
So to be continued.
To be continued, but it, it certainly was, I, you know, I thought that we should file that motion to dismiss, that tort claim notice lack of, and, and was glad to see that was the first, uh, shot out of the, from our, from our employer.
Thank you, Jim.
You bet.
Okay, next is, anyone here for utility, uh, cutoff or ordinance violation? Hearing none, time for citizen input. Anyone? State your name and address, please, for, uh, Karen's benefit, and please speak.
Hi. Hi, Bill. This is Tracy Fox, 301 North Shore. Um, I just want to follow up on the discussion about the public meetings and having the availability of online access for, um, folks to listen in. I do hope, regardless of what this state does, I, I do hope they extend it, and I'm, I'm hopeful that they will at least modify their state regulations to allow for this option going forward permanently. I think also it allows the public, especially here in Culver, folks who are in the sort of high-risk categories for COVID are going to continue to be at high risk for a while, and it really offers a nice option for you all to get, um, more and broader range of input and for us to really participate more actively in the, in the democratic process, so I really appreciate having the opportunity, and I really hope that, um, regardless of what steps you all take going forward, this can be a permanent option. That's it. Thanks, Bill.
Your point's well taken, uh, Tracy. Anyone else? Hearing no other citizen input? Council issues? Rich? Rich? Counsel issue?
Sorry, I was muted. Yes, two things, and it wasn't Jonathan, so. Um, first, I want to applaud the library and the library board for their efforts to make some special accommodations for access to materials and, um, access to the, uh, technology and computers in the library. Um, I appreciate that personally, and I think it is very good for the town. So, thank you, um, there. Um, second question for Jonathan. Um, at our last meeting, we talked a little bit about 530 South Ohio Street, um, and equipment being stored in there still. Is there any update on that?
Yeah, I think it's good news. Um, I talked to the owner of the equipment and told him, uh, we wanted everything out by July 1st, and I think within a few days, he was able to meet with a couple contractors. Um, I think his original plan, uh, wasn't going to work, so he decided he was going to hire it out and, um, had some numbers back, and both said they could complete it by July 1st, so. Um, I think it'll be right around a week or two before that, but it said, last I spoke with him, he said that was doable, so.
Okay, thank you for following up on that. I appreciate it.
Yeah, thank you, Jonathan.
Nothing else.
Bill?
Um, I was hoping that, um, during the year, we'd be a little further ahead on capital projects. Um, school board last week, uh, sold $3.5 million worth of bonds, excuse me, worth of bonds, 10 years, at 1.553, which is a bargain basement price. And, um, I, I kind of wish that, uh, you know, we'd be further along with some capital projects, because, uh, these rates aren't going to stay where they are, and, um, I don't know what we can do about the capital projects, but, um, it, it's something that, um, I wish that we had a few in the pipeline, because, um, really advantageous time.
Okay, thank you. Anything else? Anything else, Bill?
No.
Okay. Sally?
Uh, I don't have anything other than I would also like to, uh, applaud the fire department mural. It's, uh, absolutely gorgeous. So I, I think it was money well spent.
I should have also mentioned that, um, Danielle Maverick did a tremendous amount of work, um, on that, and on behalf of the the visitors center, which sort of coordinated the, or, I'm sorry, developed Culver, coordinated the project, so, um, uh, she leaves, deserves a lot of, uh, credit for that.
Thank you, Rich. Sally, anything else?
No, that was it.
Okay, I've only got, uh, two things, but it's really one. And you all know that, uh, this is voting season, and next Tuesday is, uh, voting, uh, various places throughout the county. Uh, we will also have voting this Saturday, uh, here in Culver at the, uh, School Administration Building. And, uh, again on, uh, next Tuesday, so, uh, get out and vote. That's all I have.
Uh, Bill, this is Jim Clevenger, I just want to add and kind of follow up with some earlier comments. You and the group are really getting pretty good at this, uh, on meeting, uh, meeting stuff, so it shouldn't be any problem to incorporate part of this into, uh, future meetings, uh. Well, I would say for all of you.
I'm sure that wasn't any age-directed comment at all. Was it, Mr. Clevenger?
It was not.
Well, I, yeah, I, I don't take it that way.
Didn't even sound like a canned response to me. Okay, thanks, Jim. I have a motion to adjourn.
Clevenger so moves.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Motion been made by Bill Clevenger, seconded by Sally Ratcherty, to adjourn the meeting. Roll call?
Mr. Clevenger?
Aye.
Mr. Githens?
Aye.
Ms. Ratcherty?
Aye.
Mr. West?
Aye.
I'll vote it out.
Motion carries. We're adjourned. Thank you all for attending.
Good night, everybody.
Good night.